Okay. It's 5:33. I'm opening the Granby Planning Board Meeting, August 25th. And we're going to be dealing with a smoke detector that's run out of battery. Okay, first on the agenda, minutes from August 11th. It's on the agenda. All right, so we want to look at it there. I didn't see any correspondence in there. Okay, so for new business, we've got a couple of decisions that need to be signed from the last site plan review and hearing.
Yeah, the two decisions there before you are the 61 Pleasant Street, that was the base thought. The two conditions placed on that particular permit were the installation of the handicap ramp and no closing later than
9 o'clock.
9 o'clock? 9:00 PM closing time at latest.
Can I take a vote on that, the sign, or I don't need to do that anymore?
No, I typically have not done that unless there was something that the board found.
You only got one decision, so?
Four, yes. So, yeah. There's, and then there's the 185 for the church.
Okay. They provided us with the map.
So, yeah, 185 West State Street. There were conditions of approval that the board approved. In addition to requiring a revised site plan, which I did furnish the board that was provided the day after the meeting, showing the
seating.
The seating, the additional, the six tables in addition to the buffer, or the, the, what's that?
Wooden planters?
Barrier planter.
For the
From the parking to the seating.
Yeah.
The conditions placed on that permit, there were a little, there were a couple. Where is that? Revised site plan showing up to six tables with capacity not to exceed 36 patrons, including installation of barriers, boulders, parking blocks around the picnic tables, the hours of operation, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Compliance with local noise bylaw in addition to standards stated in Section 4.45. Section 4.45 of your zoning bylaw are the noise standards for the mixed-use development overlay. Number four, lighting to be shielded and not directed towards abutting properties. Waste disposal to occur weekly. And then the permit shall be in conformance with any, any further applications or requirements of the town, including the Granby Board of Health. And the board did find special permit and site plan approval findings, so you see that in 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Why were talking about that? So, it brought to my attention that the Board of Health didn't get the the information on this in time. Did you hear anything about that? They kind of felt like they were slighted that we intentionally didn't send it to them in time. But I told them, we don't, we don't do that. When the application is filled out and, and submitted to the, to the Town Hall, they ought, once, once all the information is there that's correct, it gets submitted
To the department.
Department heads the same time as it gets advertised. So, the board doesn't really have any
So, yeah, and, you know, I think as has been in the past with regards to your previous permits, not to say that the Board of Health wouldn't have a response, because it's, it's a food establishment, so likely they would. And likely it would say something like, you need additional permits, or here's some consideration for the planning board. In the past, the planning board has not issued, you know, any permits that didn't let's, how do I say that? The planning board has issued permits that state that additional permits may be required by the Board of Health, and that would be up to the applicant
That's right.
To deal with.
That's right.
You haven't used any considerations from the Board of Health to deny a permit.
And I explain that, Tom, that it goes through, it goes by them anyway, but we don't
Right, because it's a food establishment, and I, I think, yeah, we can do better as far as making sure that town staff and town department heads would get the application.
Well, as far as I, I know, most boards meet at least twice a week, maybe, maybe the Board of Health doesn't, but we're, we're under an obligation
Right.
Once the application is submitted
There's a public hearing and
That we, that we have a process to meet. The town, the town sends them out as soon as they have them.
As soon as the public hearing notice is processed and we have a scheduled public hearing, Kathy would be sending them out to the department heads and other town departments for any sort of comment. So, I mean, we'll just review what that process looks like and make sure that any future application can get to them.
Okay. So, we signed off on both the site plan and the special permit. Granby Planning. Okay, future application. So, you've got some information here across the review?
So, yeah, this was, I think it was timely based on, so, an update is, I have to schedule an initial meeting with the zoning bylaw update committee. You know, the board has been having conversation regarding that. I have received my, the contract from the town to, like, now get started. I think, as you know, the, the intention is to share with the planning board, in addition to the committee, a diagnostic of the zoning. You know, the, over time, the board has identified, I have identified conflicts, issues with the zoning bylaw, and have, and, and am putting that into a document, which the board will have. That's supposed to be the baseline for your zoning work. My intention is to have a presentation and the, and a report by your September, first September meeting. In addition to that, likely inviting members of the zoning bylaw committee, or having a separate meeting to do the same thing to that meeting. With that said, I did offer, based on our last conversation, because I think we can do multiple things at the same time, especially when it comes to the zoning work, that we've identified how to, how we're going to try to address display of goods and services, and, or goods and wares. And so, when I prepared for you, something that you've seen, I did add a couple of additional specifics in trying to figure out how to define that, in addition to the conversation we were having of what this outdoor storage or outdoor display of goods and wares means in different connotations of Mr. Martin, when he came last week or two weeks ago and talked about how transactions may occur, there would be no structure, or there might be a little structure, but is that the principal use versus the accessory use? So, I think it's important for the, the town and the board to explore what it means to display as much of, as much as what I think he was trying to display. In addition to, if, if we are defining principal use as the transaction of goods on the site versus the principal use of a, a future use, like Mr. Martin's, where it is all farmland, or farmland equipment in addition to other types of equipment. That's different, or it should be perceived as different. Because I, and the impacts are going to be different, I think, based on the conversation that we had at the last meeting. So, this is, you know, I think another stab at trying to figure out how you want to address this, knowing that there are these components of outdoor display of goods that an entity like the Dollar General might be displaying something outdoors versus that Dollar Tree might be displaying outdoors where the trans, transactions are inside a building versus the display of goods on a large parcel on West State Street in your mixed-use zone, mixed-use development overlay, where presumably you're just going to have a display of goods that may be passive in that you may just have people, you might just have this display of goods and people might call, you know, there might be a sign to call someone if you're interested, and then there would be some sort of transaction that happened after the fact. So, creating standards for that, if that is what the town, the, the board wants to explore further, but also really trying to define what it means to display goods outdoors.
Okay. So, here's my take, take on this, just off the, off the bat. One, are they just, are, are the goods and wares being displayed, or are they being stored? Okay, so we've got, we've got companies, businesses in town that are storing stuff that you may or may not know what it is, but it's wrapped up in skids, it's fertilizer, it's mulch, it's what, I mean, mulch is being displayed, right? Piles of mulch. Skids of whatever, plants. I mean, to me?
But, but, but I think the, the biggest thing, when you have mulch and plants, presumably those transactions are happening
Why do we care where the transaction's happening?
Because I think you want to address whether or not the principal use is a place of retail versus a place of storage.
So, that's the value in finding out whether something is a primary or an accessory?
That's my, that's my opinion with regards to, there are two different things when you're talking about the principal use of storing things outside and displaying them versus storing things outside and displaying them, but that is the, the, the intention is to go to that place for buying something, like the garden supply store, where you would display
They're doing both. They're doing both.
Right. So, I mean, and, but I think, with that said, if you're also displaying and storing farm equipment, but you're not going into a building where the prin, the intention of that principal building is to probably also store some other stuff, like a regular store, but also buy it there, is it different? I don't know. I mean, it's, it's up to the, up to the board how the board wants to
Would, would
Explore that.
Going with the, the farm equipment, with today's technologies, this stuff is all done online anyway.
Sure.
So, you know, I think we should, I think we should propose that we're going to allow the display of goods and wares in these, in this, these business zones, whether it's an overlay or not, and that they must be displayed in a, in a way that it's not obstructing traffic, trap, views, sidewalks, et cetera.
Would Safety concern while driving. I don't see the value in where the transaction happened. I'm not seeing
And, and to the point where you've got retail, we've got stores that are, that are buying bulk, storing outside, not necessar, not necessarily displaying it for goods and wares, they're, they're just storage, and then their goods and wares are on their, on their storefront. I mean
Well, so like this first example here that you gave us, you assigned footages, or they assigned footages. So, 20 feet from any street right-of-way line, nor closer than 25 feet from an intersection of two street right-of-way lines. So, that would kind of help with not obstructing your view if you're driving or trying to pull off from the road or anything like that. So, it does seem like a good idea to sign some sort of footage to it, something that's a little more
Something simple, something really simple, yeah.
Yeah.
But the, I think also what the board, we should be exploring is, as sometimes we have conditioned approval of how things are displayed, like 185 West Street, those small vehicles, right? We couldn't put them on the yard, which presumably, you know, I think, probably for consistency purposes, you're not going to allow things in the setback to do these display. You might require, like you said, maybe it's 20 feet from the setback interior, and I don't know if you would want some sort of buffer from the right-of-way, or do you just want, you know, the, the stored materials or this, this farm equipment?
Well, so, so then you can define it, define it, that if it's, and, and again, you're, you're, you're splitting hairs, but what are they doing? If it's storage, right, bulk storage, and they're putting it 20 feet off the, the road, that's, that's kind of cluttering our, the, the, the vista of our downtown, right? So, if it's storage, it should be, we should define that as, well, then it, it should be further back off the road, and if it's displaying goods and wares, that they're trying to, you know, something that they may be storing anywhere, but if it's unpackaged and being displayed, then I would say a 20-foot setback off the, off the, the right-of-way would be sufficient in most cases. Anything closer would, would require special permit, or, for, for instance, the, the setbacks for Granby Liquor, or any of those places right there, if you tell them 20 feet off the, the, the right-of-way, it's under front doorstep. And we've made some, you know, with signage, whereas we've made concessions there for them because they don't have a lot of, they don't have a lot of setback to begin with.
Yeah, I could see like if there is a, like, let's say you're trying to sell Christmas trees, and if you put them 20 feet back, but there's a narrow plot, they don't have a ton of frontage, and you can't really see until you're already past. That may not be ideal either. But as far as like defining goods and wares, what do we have that defined as currently?
We don't have
We don't. We don't have it defined at all.
And, yeah, so currently it's not defined, and currently in the bylaw, it's not allowed anywhere.
And it's not enforced.
And it's not enforced, so, yeah, there's like a tooth right there, right? So
So, we could never really capture exactly what wares and goods are, because there's so many things. There's things we can define that aren't.
Correct. And I, I think universally, it makes sense that if the board wants to explore a bylaw that doesn't separate how an item is displayed outdoors, then you just create the standards on how you display that outdoors.
That's what I say. You know, and, and we're, we're talking specifically the business zone and the overlay zone.
Would you permit it elsewhere?
Would it be permitted elsewhere? Well, first of all, if it's goods, goods and wares, it would have to be a, if it's not a farm, it would have to be a special permit to allow it anywhere outside a business zone. So, I don't know as if
So, if you had so if you had an existing business in a zone that wasn't a farm parcel, or that did not have agricultural exemption, could you just, would you be able to display what you're selling in front of your property if you provide standards? In a zone that typically wouldn't be a
So, if they're not, if they're not already doing it, then they, then they wouldn't be allowed to without a special permit.
So, you would they would be automatically allowed to if they had some sort of, the expectation is that if you were running a business and you had something you wanted to display, they could presumably display it outdoors already in one of those zones, assuming that it adhered to the standards. But if you were not in a zone where a business was permitted and that business is operating already grandfathered, right? So, it wouldn't, unless they were changing something, then you would be requiring a special permit?
If, if, if they wanted, if they wanted to start displaying, but if they're, if they were, if they were already operating, pre-existing non-conforming, and were already operating by displaying, then I guess it would be allowed.
And you would also then allow, if the types of uses permitted in other zoning districts, that you, there would be some, you know, if it was a retail business or something?
But I don't know, I don't know as if we have any
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
I'm, I'm trying to run around town and see where there's businesses.
So hypothetically, I made, I got Nate's Woodshop out of my house, residential area, and I make birdhouses for sale. And I want to display them in the front yard.
If you were already permitted, then and retail is not typically allowed, you would be grandfathered to be, to sell, as you have been, but you would not be allowed unless you were already displaying the
I got you.
Bird feeders or whatever is you wanted to sell.
It would, it would follow the pre-existing non-conformity?
Yeah, and you would, you would get a permit based on that.
Like the one in Morgantown.
Sure.
And thinking of another business in town, maybe, yeah, I, I still, we're auto salvage, maybe, he's got some
There are so many.
General business and industrial are pretty much the
Like one person runs like a swim school.
Yeah.
I mean
Displaying it even.
Yeah. Exactly. People are snolting though.
Well, and you've, we've got other businesses that are allowed.
On Daremark?
No, no, no.
But people
I'm saying people that have, that do hairdressing, those types of
That's true, and we want to encourage
But what are they going to display?
Yeah.
Right. What if they wanted to? I don't know. But you're right, it's just a small town.
So, I can't think of anything that's
Yeah, because a sign or something like that isn't going to be goods and wares currently, right? Not a hairdresser.
Those are allowed.
I guess we have to think about, if you were like a neighbor of these places, like, what would you be upset about?
Most products are
And we're saying, we're saying it wouldn't be allowed. It wouldn't be allowed unless it's already there, and it's already been doing it.
But do we want to do that? Do I mean, we want to encourage people to, I don't know, do we want to make it more broad?
I mean, most of the roadside stuff that we're seeing is like small hobbyist, like woodworking farms.
Yeah, farms.
I think like farm stand would be something kind of different.
They're exempt anyway.
Okay. If they're selling maple syrup or honey or something like that, I think it's exempt.
So, not using the, the conversations that we've had over the past couple of months for that one property on West State Street, if the intention is to just store these, this farm equipment outside, have standards that it would adhere to. If there was no one there, and it's literally like a museum, right? So, it's just there, like, and presumably you would need to create standards also for where you would park, if you wanted to look at, you know, hundreds of equipment outdoors, how it was lit, when it was lit. That's diff, a little different than
They, they would still have to have a site plan review. So, and, and the site plan review would be, what are your hours of operation?
So, then the site plan for that instance, we probably should come up with a use.
Well, do we come up with a use, or, or do we define goods and wares? Vehicles to me are not goods and wares, any more than sheds. Sheds are what you store goods and wares in. I said this over and over again.
Correct.
The, the original intent for goods and wares was so that if, if you're in a, in a, especially if you're in the city, you don't want people putting their stuff out on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
There's, there's even some bylaws that are stricter, you can't even display them in the windows, you know, but I don't think, I don't think we're that kind of community.
Right.
No, I would, I could see it in these picturesque type city fronts, where they have tight sidewalks and storefronts, and they don't want items on the storefronts. And so We're not like that.
And then you, and we're not, but then you look at like North Hampton, they're allowing them to, to, ever since COVID, they're moving their restaurants out onto the sidewalk, out onto the street. They're actually, they've gone even further with it.
Yeah. So, I, I wonder if, if you look at page one into page two, the bottom of that says, display of wares and goods as a principal use. Ignore the display of wares and goods, and look at that particular example, this is Wilberham with a special permit, creating standards for display of automobiles and trucks, or specialized farm equipment. And there are standards that require a special permit for this type of use.
So, they're grouping trucks and specialized equipment, farm equipment together, automobiles, trucks, and farm Automobiles, trucks and farm equipment. They're all grouping it together.
And typically you have the display of autos covered in, um.
Well, they're talking about adjacent residential. So, so you don't meet, this is, I think what that's saying is if you've got a couple of vehicles you want to sell, you, you don't have to be licensed to sell them out of your, out of your, your house, right? If you want to sell your, your truck, you can sell it and have people come to your house and look at it. You could have up to probably two commercial vehicles. I think that's what, I think that's what they're saying here.
So, I mean, we can take that out because really, I think as you were mentioning, Jim, how it looks, how, what the display looks like if you happen to be in a butter, whether or not it's residential use, like if you had along West State Street, we had the same conversation with those at Dollar General of the single family homes that abutted that type of property. So I don't know exactly which property, you know, that person was talking about. However, they're single family homes there. What type of buffering would we require for, if, if it's not necessarily in a residential district, but it abuts a residential use, you probably would want to create additional buffer and/or not require certain types of.
So that would require a, a site plan review or a special permit. Because it, I that's, I, that's how I would identify vehicles on how they're going to display and where they're going to display them. That would require a site plan review at a minimum, maybe not a special permit if it's allowed, but a site plan review. Where you can put some sort of restrictions or conditions based on the, that particular site. As far as, and, and don't include them in goods and wares.
Correct. Yeah.
Goods and wares, there's just, you can't, you can't obstruct. The vehicle, the particular traffic or views. Um, it needs to maintain, maintain a minimum of X amount of feet off the, the the right way. And it's just a lot. I don't want to be looked at. I don't want to go down there and say, hey, we're going to, we're talking about putting a couple of skids over here. I need a site plan review. I don't want to get, we don't want to get involved in that. If it's doing something it's not supposed to be doing, that's up to code enforcement to say, hey, they just did something here. And he needs to go down and force a bylaw, but. I know the, the, the. There was a vendor down at five corners that had the bicycles. He had them out on the sidewalk and he was taking up parking spaces.
Yeah, that's not allowed.
And it wasn't allowed, but he couldn't be spoken to at the time because he said, I pay for those spaces. I can do what I want. And that's not the end, that's not the way that works.
Right.
That's what you want to eliminate for goods and wares, that you're not obstructing pedestrian traffic or you're not taking up allotted parking spaces that were meant for parking to be displaying goods and wares. And maybe that's something we put in goods and wares, should not be taking up.
Required parking.
Required parking for the, for that site.
So with that example, you're, you're putting your inventory outside for display, but and maybe I can't get it in my brain and you guys are seeing something and I'm not, but you're selling the bicycles inside building. Or your, your intention is to go to that bike shop to buy something in there.
But if he wanted to, but if that individual, that business wanted to display his bicycles, bicycles outside when he's open, rolls them out. Just like a lot of places, all out there, snow blowers or whatever, as long as it's, it's off the it's off the, the, uh, the right way.
Yep.
It's not taking up assigned parking.
Yeah.
And it's not obstructing pedestrian traffic. Every situation is going to be a little different. So people get more setback than others.
Is there a difference if you look at the last on page two, um, that other clause in that zoning bylaw? Outdoor display of merchandise for retail sales as an accessory used to indoor display. Display shall be to the rear of the front yard. The display shall not exceed 10% of the building area. So something like that suggests that it's an accessory use. And I think that's, I think maybe that's the crux of it.
Yeah.
The display and storage of goods as an accessory use versus a principal use. And so the example of the farmland equipment and vehicles, the display of those is a principal use, like you're using that parcel to display goods. Versus it's incidental to your principal use, which would be to sell goods in a.
Well, that, that, no, it's not incidental to your principal use. Your principal use is to sell bicycles. If I want to display them outside, if there's room for it, then.
So if retail sales of bicycles aren't allowed on a parcel, retail sales, then you could operate that particular. So. Well, would, I, I guess maybe with the conversation that we're having today too, is identifying a new standard or a use, which suggests that the display of farm equipment slash automobiles have very specific standards and that's the principal use of the parcel.
But we're covering that under a special permit.
Correct.
Site.
Correct. But if you were to look at it on your schedule of uses, display of auto equipment slash farm equipment would be in your schedule of uses and be allowed with a special permit in the general business industrial zone anywhere else. Whereas the display of goods and wares would be allowed where you have a retail establishment with standards already embedded in the zoning bylaw. So creating the standards that you, that we've been talking about where it's setback, where, you know, you're not creating any sort of pedestrian safety issues, et cetera, that you're not taking up any required parking. That's part of any sort of permitting for a retail establishment, but they would need to, if the board had a comment during, you know, a meeting where they were to approve a new bicycle shop, you're going to say you can display up to X amount of bikes, but it cannot be displayed. It must be displayed in accordance with the bylaw and you cannot use, you know, whatever the parking spot for it.
Correct. And if they're in a, and if they're in a multi-tenant building, then that gets managed by the, by the owner.
Yep.
Right? So. And, and using that specifically, there is no place to display.
Yeah.
Goods and wares on that, on that establishment, on any of those businesses, because there's, there's there's, there's no room to do it between.
Maybe like a foot and a, you mean at five corners?
Yeah.
Maybe like a, yeah.
There's no place for them to do it because it would. So.
And so I know that some towns and having been a planner in Florida, this happens a lot too, is you have people say, can I park, you know, my tractor that I want to sell? I operate in this, this particular business in this shared zone, but I want to show the tractor. Can I put that in the setback? No. Not permitted. Or with a special permit.
Well, technically it wouldn't be allowed, but who's going to enforce it? It's going to be, you know, they do that kind of stuff.
No, I understand that, but I, I think it I think it, it is, it either is trying to figure out a way to.
So if it's not the business owner that, that's displaying their vehicle, the tractor that he's trying to sell, if it's not his, that's part of his business, he, he, he may. Let me give a scenario here. He sells. He sells, uh, feed, feed for livestock. But he happens to have a forklift that he wants to sell. And he wants to put it somewhere on his property to, to, to sell it.
Yeah.
Do we really care?
Uh, do you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But if it's somebody up the street, a buddy of his that says, hey, can I bring my, my John Deere tractor down and sell it? Technically you can't do it because it's not part of the, the owner's business, right? But who's, who's going to, you know, who's going to, that, that's a, to me, that's a, that's not a problem. We're trying to solve.
Or because it's temporary in nature, you can create a regulatory thing that says where it's just a statement that you are storing something outdoors for the purposes of selling. This is getting into another thing, but you, you, but I don't know, like.
It's, it's like.
You, you don't want, I don't know if you want to have, because we see it like all the time where people are trying to sell their car, but they're putting it right in the setback, right? In front of their home or it's on someone's property where it's easy to be seen by the traveling public as you typically assign with a phone number called this. If that's not a problem, then we, then it doesn't need to be addressed, but I think also if if there is a specific type of good that would be okay to sell or to display and be setback. I don't know, like, is that something that we need to create standards for? Or, or just require a special permit for it? And then also put a time, you know, time constraint on something like that.
Well, again, we can't, we can't come up with a bylaw for every single scenario that could happen. I think we should just stick on the, the, the major stuff. And right now it's goods and wares. We should separate goods and wares from any type of motor vehicles.
Okay.
Motor, any type of motor vehicle, we need a special permit.
So now what about farm equipment that has a motor?
Same thing. We need a, we need a special permit.
I would want to define farm equipment, bombcats, utility trailers. To me, they all kind of fall under the same thing, whether it be agriculture or construction.
That's what I said.
A green tractor and a bobcat, one's agriculture, one's construction.
It used to be, but they make attachments for bobcats now that.
Sure they do.
So that's what I'm saying, type of motor vehicle.
A payloader and a, a, a combine. They're all the same to me. I mean, that's their equipment.
And the same thing with the tra, the trailers. They're not motorized, but, um, it shouldn't, they shouldn't be considered, it, it's something that could be registered. So it's not something that should be considered goods and wares. If they want to display them to sell them like, uh. Then, no, well, no, like the, the guy on the other road.
Oh, yep.
Yeah. Yes, displaying trailers there. Special permit. If that's what you're going to do, you need a special permit to, if that's what your, your main business is, right?
That's in a, in, in a general business or industrial zone?
Yeah.
And does all these questions come up because people want to have almost like an outdoor business? They don't want to have like the two problems we're having, right? One is the all the sheds. I mean, isn't that sort of how it started this issue?
I think this whole thing started because of the definition, what's good and goods and wares. Nobody can seem to.
But I mean.
We looked it up in the encyclopedia and it didn't, it didn't say that sheds.
We need to make some rules around an outdoor business.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe, you know, it's just because there's not a roof over these things.
Right. And it seems to, it's going to keep coming up with people having just stuff outside. I mean, you could do it separate. Like you said, the farm related tractors and cars and trucks, that'd be separate. And the other one would be outdoor business and not worry about the goods and wares. So that just seems like it's very confusing.
Well, when we say displaying goods and wares, that means it's part of the, the original.
Right, which is an indoor business and they just put some things outside. But some people like the sheds, they just want to have it outside or their Christmas tree.
Yes, and well.
Most of their business is outside. I don't know. Like this one he shows for one man that says only 10% can be outside. It's not one we fall under that, but.
The display should not exceed 10% of the building area. That suggests that that's like an accessory.
Right. Like you just, yeah.
So that's like the bike example, like if you had a bike business.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be great. If we set.
Dollar General. Dollar General, like they're pulling the old.
And I could see that that would be just a standard of development for if you wanted to display outside, it couldn't meet, you needed to meet X, Y, and Z. Where those types of businesses are allowed happen to be in the general business zone and industrial zone with either site plan approved or a special permit. If you want to display things outside, they need to meet X, Y, and Z.
Exactly.
The other thing I think that is a little different, that I think we now have a pathway of thinking is creating special permit standards for things like the sales and display outdoors of.
Yeah.
Client.
Yeah.
Farm equipment, whatever. So it's a lot, it is clearer for me because in my brain it was like, I don't know if the, I don't know where the board is on here. Um, but these are the types of conversations that we're going to be having throughout the zoning processes. Because I think, you know, Jim has been here the longest. But as we do have some board members that have been here for, um, you know, a couple of years, we've identified some conflicts in addition to the, the past permit that was just. Looks like major conflict with regards to food, drive-through food establishment or food establishment without a drive-through outdoor cafe. Outdoor cafe is allowed. Food establishment or fast food establishment is not. So those types of conflicts clarifying now. And I can imagine that there will be.
I know, I know some of that's in the master plan too, but I, I think when we say fast food, we don't want a McDonald's or something. Warren, this town's in no position to be refusing revenue, number one. Number two, what makes us better than Veltzer Town or South Hadley or some, some of these other communities?
We don't want to turn into chicken feet.
That quality food. That have a McDonald's. I mean, if it's in a, if it's in a business zone and it's I'll go, I don't know what it's, the gas station is that's shut down across from the pizza place.
Oh, oh, the old.
Oh, I see what you mean. I see what you mean.
Gas line back in my day, but anyway, no.
Yeah.
If a McDonald's or some sort of a place like that, when they go in, why would, why would we not?
Cause it depends on the character of the town, like what we wanted to keep it in, you know?
I, I get that, but how is that hurting the town? It's like, that's doing nothing.
I don't think it does. Like right, right now, for instance, if you've ever driven down 116 in South Hadley, there's a place called Swenson Granite. They are a little building where they do their transactions and two acres of granite posts, columns, stairs, outdoor granite. I don't even know if we could let them in this town right now with the language. And it's a nice place. I mean, I'd like it in this.
I just think we don't have anything to do with outdoors businesses.
I mean, you do allow for, you could allow for McDonald's with a special permit, like that is suggested there. In the general business zone. So I think the typical use is, and again, another conversation for another day with your master plan. But. Yeah. So I mean, I think the conversation that we're having today with regards to display of outdoor goods and wares. I will have some clearer language for you based on this conversation because I think this, this has been clear for me, like how do I move forward? I know I move forwards.
You feel, you feel better about it now?
Oh, yeah, because I was unsure, like I don't, am I explaining it wrong to the board? Maybe they, or they just don't want any regulations. Maybe they, or they just don't want any regulations? In that case, it's like, then we have to figure out how to communicate that.
Well, we, we want to simplify it.
Sure.
And for those listening on, you know, this board isn't going to make the decisions. We're going to, this, all, all this board is doing is proposing some sensible changes to, to help bring our bylaws up to date. And it's up to the voters to approve it. So it's not, you know, it's not me or anybody else here on the board that's, that's going to finalize the, the outcome of what we, what we're talking about.
One thing I'd like to see is that the language applies to anybody that really can come through that door and not one specific industry. Don't get caught up again. I think we'd be doing everybody a service by fluidly getting them through this process with language that makes sense and applies to everybody's, everybody's business.
Right.
Well, I think this, this start is what we talked about tonight, separating what goods and wares means to, what, what the definition of goods and wares, how they, how it can be displayed. And, and then businesses that want to sell equipment, motorized equipment, trailers, registered, any type of vehicle that should be, that can be, or needs to be registered can do so by a special permit so that we can, because that really requires to know what's going on on that site. You see how we can make, make sure that the butters are protected? The, the character of the town is protected?
Yeah. And that's going to be specific though to outdoor.
Yeah, and that gives us a lot of leeway with site plan, a special permit with site plan. Gives us the leeway to look at every situation.
Okay.
You got enough for tonight?
That's, like, now I feel like things are going to flow in my head.
Nice.
So with that said, that is obviously a component of the zoning work and that we're doing. But as you know, or as I've mentioned to you earlier today is, I have to schedule whatever a meeting with the zoning bylaw update committee looks like. Because I still am unsure. But in addition to that, my intention is to present to the board at the next meeting. We don't have any items. There's no, unless there's a site plan that pops up, but there's no special permits, there's no permit applications. So presumably the next meeting, which is scheduled for September night, which is the second Monday in September, or eighth, would be a presentation.
Would be a what?
Presentation. I would present the diagnostic.
What presentation for what?
So the DLTA grant was for a diagnostic of the zoning bylaw. So there is a report that identifies conflicts, that identifies what you've identified in your community plans, the master plan, the open space plans, any sort of regulatory tools that you've identified there that may be, that may necessitate additional review or exploration. The board also looked in the past of zoning map amendments. So that's been identified in the master plan as well. We, we tried that a couple of years ago during COVID. You know, is it, does it warrant another conversation for other parts of town to increase economic development? So it is bringing to light how the community plans, in addition to what has transpired over time with your zoning bylaw, how that aligns with both meeting Chapter 4A, the set, the zoning act. Because it's likely that there are, there are conflicts with the zoning act at the moment. In addition to if there are conflicts elsewhere in the bylaw with certain aspects of your bylaw. For instance, where the matrix does not match the narrative. We dealt with this with like the medical uses. Where there's some standards in the matrix, but they don't match the narrative. So it is identifying those, those instances and then also just bringing light.
You should have a list.
Yeah.
You, you've got a list of a couple of items you're already aware of.
Yeah, and so I've, I've included that in the report, identifying that. And it's really just, if the board doesn't want one, I can just provide the report and walk through it.
We had that problem with the, the rifle range. There was, there was a conflict between the, the schematic, the, the, and the, and the narrative. And the narrative overrules the, the chart, I should say.
Yeah, so it would be like having the decision makers say, no, it should be this, not this. So for instance, yeah, like you said, if your narrative is saying something, is that what you want to communicate? And what, is that what needs to be?
Yeah, but, but if you, for our next meeting, if you could look those up, because some of those only require a, a decision here on the board to make sure that the narrative matches or the, the chart matches the narrative. We don't have to.
You mean the determination by the board for a certain permit? Like it needs to go by, yeah. Yeah, I can confirm that.
We can, we can make that pretty simple. Doesn't have to go to a town meeting. It's, it's
Right.
It's a an administrative correction.
I, I would want to check with town council with regards to, I mean, I think there are some clear examples of that, but there's
Yeah, I'm not saying there's a, there's a
Yeah, there's not, it's not something universal, but there are probably examples where, yeah, it could be a quick fix with regards to how it appears in the narrative versus the, the matrix of the schedule of uses or the matrix in the, the separate sections describing the standards in your mixed use zone, the village center zone, et cetera. So.
And, and I know we're going to, this is a little, I don't, I don't know if this can be included or not, but the, the subdivision bylaws are out of whack too.
We can probably find some funding to do that. Yeah, and we've been, I've been doing that with other communities, the subdivision. Yeah, yours
You know, the granite curving 30 foot wide.
Is that necessary?
And, you know, the, even Pioneer Valley is filing upon that. It's too much impervious area for a, for a, you know, a 30, 30 home subdivision to have a 30 foot wide, like Maximilian, that's ridiculous.
Or requiring sidewalks on both sides, things like that. But you always have the ability to, should have the ability to waive if that's what you want.
We, we do, but it would be, it would be nicer to clear some of those, some of those issues out.
Yeah, that won't be part of the zoning work, but I think we can definitely put that in the work plan for like maybe identifying some funding for doing that work. Because it, it does, that's a back and forth and it typically includes your highway department because you also have stormwater requirements through MS4.
And that's just change.
Yeah.
So that's another reason to look at it.
Right, exactly. So there, there's both best practices that have changed in addition to MS4 requirements. So that's good to note. Has anybody to your knowledge taken advantage of the ADU change in, in law?
It's not in yet.
Oh, it's not in, it's not. It's proposed?
ADUs, that's not, they, the state hasn't finalized that yet.
I mean, the regulations are there. If the town does not have anything, the building inspector could presumably be regulating them right now and accepting permits.
We better talk to town council on that because I thought there was a, I thought there was a holdup in Boston.
There's a holdup for some communities in that they may have been too strict in regulating the ADUs, but that does not stop applicants from pulling permits through the building department. Like, for instance, there's a community that I worked with where there was a requirement for site plan review by the planning board. And the AG's office said not, you cannot do it through the site plan review process by the planning board unless you do X, Y, and Z. So we have to go back to town meeting to change things if that's what the planning board wants to do. But if the planning board does not want to do that, they can go to the building department, assuming that they meet this, this, and this with a criteria of their building, like under 900 square feet or half the size of the principal home, whichever is less.
So you're positive that's in effect right now, the state didn't?
I mean, there are ADUs being built as we, like, I know permits have been pulled. So I don't, I don't know if there are any being pulled in Granby at the moment, but I know that, I know that when we, as a whole, the conversation was whether or not this needed to be in a town meeting to say that ADUs will be reviewed by the building inspector and not the planning board or any other entity. So it would just get a building permit. I didn't think that there was any issue from Boston with regards to ADUs, unless it was because towns were adopting bylaws that were too strict.
For the last, it's been a few months, but, well, before it was supposed to go into effect, I
Sure.
I thought town council told me that there's been, there's been some issues at the state level.
I mean, regulations have been promulgated by the executive office of council liberal communities and they are requirement reports for towns that have been approving them. So we'll probably get some clarification.
I heard what you heard, Kano, over the news that, uh, towns were being too strict in limiting square footage, even below the, whatever it was proposed, 900.
Uh huh. Or they were, yeah, so there were probably a way that they were trying to limit them not using the language that the state has provided for what an accessory dwelling unit can be.
I want one.
Might need one. All right, anything else? Anything else you want to go over?
No, nothing regarding zoning. Just wanted to let the board know there was, I'll share with the board, the Citizen Planning Training Collaborative. So there's a CPTC half-day training in, at Greenfield Community College. There is, it's like the rules and responsibilities of a planning board slash zoning board, how to write a decision, what site plan review looks like, and then planning with community support. So there's, you know, some sessions that are being held at Greenfield Community College. It's 50 bucks, you get breakfast, it's from, I think, nine to one.
Wait, what day?
On October 4th.
What's it?
I'll have, I'll send out that note because it just came out this week. But I think it could be useful as a refresher or if you're new to the board to learn that. And I do have some, some handouts that could also be helpful. Good to know.
Who's hosting, the Greenfield community is hosting it, but who's putting it?
Uh, the Citizen Planning Trainer Collaborative, so CPTC. It's usually a bunch of planning planners slash land use attorneys that put the conference on. So the sessions are taught or, you know, presented by, I know that a couple of municipal land use attorneys are presenting there. In addition to some like long time, 30 plus year planners that know their way around zoning. And it's usually zoning.
All right, sounds good. Anybody else have anything? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.